Seven o'clock, the meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Lesbrunz, Cascade Township Supervisor. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trusty Nordhook.
Here.
Trusty McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Here.
Treasurer Pierce.
Here.
Trusty Castle.
Here.
Trusty Shipley.
Present.
Clerks Slater.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Is there a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
The motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have no presentations tonight, but we want to welcome the Cub Scouts and Weebleows from PAC 3634. Thank you for choosing our meeting as one step closer to getting your badge for the Arrow of Light. So we have a public comment section coming up right next. Feel free to take advantage of that, or there's one later on at the end. So, but thank you for coming tonight. So now is the time for public comments. If you have a question or concern, please come to the podium, state your name and address for our record keeping. Try to limit it to three minutes. Thank you. Is there anyone virtually, Ms. Brat? Okay. Approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion or discussion?
Motion to approve. Support by Shipley.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried. Financial actions. Is there a motion or discussion?
Motion to approve the financial actions.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, ordered by trustee McDonald to approve tonight's financial actions. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried. First item of new business tonight is regarding the repeal of the animal control ordinance at the township level and turning it over to the Sheriff's Department. So first, I think we will hear from Manager Swayze and Officer DeGroot. But then a public hearing is required, so we'll open it up for questions or comments from the public before making our decision. But that, Manager Swayze?
Thank you. So on July 21st, the Kent County Animal Control Operations were officially reassigned from the Kent County Health Department to the Kent County Sheriff's Department. The restructuring was the result of extensive research completed by the county administrator's office and received unanimous approval by the county board of commissioners. With animal control operations now being under the sheriff's department, the animal control officers have received supervision and training from sworn staff that is more in line with the law enforcement function that they perform. The county believes that the supervision and training will translate to safer and more effective animal control services to the communities that are served by the county. So up until this restructuring, the animal control officers primarily took enforcement action by citing violations of health department's animal control regulations. As the Kent County Health Department no longer oversees those operations, the animal control officers are unable to enforce them. In order to solve that issue and update the regulations that were nearly 20 years old, the new Kent County Animal Control Ordinance was drafted and approved by the Kent County Board of Commissioners. The newly adopted ordinance, which is included in your packet for review, is a municipal civil ordinance and enforcement action will be taken in the form of civil infraction citations. In more serious cases involving animal complaints, animal control officers and deputies will have the option to cite and or seek charges under the applicable state laws. So through this process, it was discovered that one limitation of the Kent County Animal Control Ordinance is that pursuant to state law, the sheriff's department only has jurisdiction to enforce the ordinances in cities, villages, and townships that do not have their own animal control ordinances. Cascade Township does currently have an animal control ordinance, and because of that, the sheriff's department is unable to take civil enforcement action in the township until our ordinance is either repealed or amended to remove animal control enforcement action. So the first step of the process is to hold the public hearing tonight for amendment or repeal. It was scheduled tonight, seven o'clock at our regular meeting. Once the public hearing is held, the township board will be able to either repeal the current ordinance or adopt an ordinance amendment at this meeting or any future meeting of the board. So I included in your packet a press release from the Kent County Sheriff's Department regarding the animal control operations. The current Cascade Township Animal Control Ordinance and then the Kent County Animal Control Ordinance. So our current ordinance is pretty straightforward and really only regulates two items, animals running at large and animal waste. The township does have other ordinances, including our zoning ordinance, that contain other animal-related regulations. Those ordinances don't have to be amended or repealed and can remain in place. Because of the simplicity of our current ordinance and the fact that the regulations are also included in the Kent County ordinance, we're recommending a full repeal of our current ordinance. This will allow the sheriff's department to fully enforce our animal control regulations in the township, and they'll work with the Cascade Township zoning administrator to do so. As Supervisor Lesbrunz mentioned, Lieutenant DeGroot, who heads up the Kent County Sheriff's Department Animal Control Division, is here to answer any questions that the board may have. There's really no financial considerations. The repeal or amendment of the animal control ordinance itself comes with minimal costs, basically staff time, printing and publishing. And by going through this process, the county sheriff's department will be able to oversee the animal control activities in the township according to their ordinance. The services are included through our East Precinct agreement, so there's no additional policing costs incurred by the township.
Thank you. Discussion questions?
Sure. I talked to the LT on my way in, and my first concern was, are we taking officers off the road that we need for law enforcement and protection? And he said, no, he said, most of the work will be done by the Animal Control Department, and only after hours would a patrol car be involved. So that set my mind to ease as a resident, considering that my primary concern is police and fire protection for these people sitting out here in the audience. So I've given you my two cents worth.
Yes, it's really just an administrative change only. The day-to-day operations would continue as they have been. The supervision of the animal control officers is now a responsibility of the sheriff's office, which is a good thing, I think. And it's really only that how they cite people if need be is the only change that we're looking for.
Thanks, LT.
Ms. Scotty, it's down?
Lieutenant, what mostly, what are the kind of incidents that you run in? Is it usually just loose dogs that people are concerned about?
Yeah, yeah, that's the vast majority of the complaints. They keep quite busy. And so we cover the entire county, cities included. But by and large, it's, yeah, it's loose animals. It's getting into the winter time. There'll be people concerned with animals that are out in the cold. In the summertime, it's the reverse, people leaving animals out in the heat. So it's, dogs are the main culprit, if you will, of who we're looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I move you go into public hearing. Support.
So we are now all in favor of going into a public hearing?
Hi.
Opposed? We are now in a public hearing, so anyone wishing to ask any questions or comments is welcome at this time.
Hi there, Scott Fansalkma. Just for clarification, what will happen then with all the signage around the parks and pathways that say, you know, considerate citizens pick up after their dogs and Cascades the law, and then they cite the number? Would you guys then remove those signs? Would you have something to say, contact Kent County Animal Control? Anything along those, like something just to think about, just if that would be touch-based? Also, it looks like this mainly, I mean, from my experience, the animal control just deals typically just with dogs. Doesn't deal with loose cats or anything like that. Obviously not any wild animals, but it's more DNR. But I guess, and I believe we've just dealt with dogs here, correct? I mean, that's, it was just animals at large and animal waste was our ordinance, correct?
Because cats aren't. Is the ordinance just for dogs to be leashed, not cats? I assume so, because our cats aren't leashed.
He said it was, they just deal mostly with dogs.
So Lieutenant DeGroot or Manager Swayze?
So you say that our current ordinance deals with dogs running at large and general animal waste.
Updating signs, no brainer?
Yeah, so you know, some of the signs reference our park ordinances, so those ones wouldn't have to be changed. Those that reference our animal control ordinance would have to be changed.
Does it change the steps that residents would have to take? Or if they're at the dog park, say they're at the rec park, and there's a dog that's aggressive towards people or animals?
So that's still, so that's, we're, even though it's public property, we're a private property owner, so we would still work.
Even though we're a public entity?
Yeah. So we would still work through our zoning administrator, but she does contact the sheriff's department to help with that as well.
So they would be involved with the enforcement?
Yes.
Okay.
The county ordinance deals with all domestic animals. So like Mr. Solomon said, it does not deal with wildlife, it's a de and non-possibility. Cats, yes, are domestic animals, but the county ordinance basically follows what the state law is. And there's really no state law that specifies anything regarding restrictions on cats. So it does specify dogs, and that's why the ordinance follows and specifies dogs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other virtual or in-person questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Lieutenant DeGroot.
I move to close public hearing. Support.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Hi.
Opposed? The public hearing is closed, so we are at now 0892022, Part B. Consider the repeal of the Animal Control Ordinance.
I move to repeal the Cascade Township Animal Control Ordinance, which will allow the Kent County Sheriff's Department to oversee animal control activities according to Kent County ordinance, which is even more inclusive than ours.
And I support that motion.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley to repeal the township's animal control ordinance. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trusty McDonald.
Yes.
Trusty Nordhook.
Yes.
Trusty Shipley.
Yay.
Treasurer Pierce.
Yes.
Trusty Castle.
Yes.
Clerks Slater. Yes, Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Yes. Motion carried. Item 0902022, the Unilateral Metro Act Permit for U.S. Signal. Manager Swayze?
Great, thank you. So the Metro Act, otherwise known as Public Act 48 of 2002, was enacted as a means to provide statewide oversight through the Michigan Public Service Commission and uniformity to the permitted use of local public right-of-ways for telecommunications infrastructure. So we received a Metro Act permit, bilateral form and application, from U.S. Signal Company LLC. The initial term of the request is 15 years, and I would note that U.S. Signal does have a expired unilateral permit that expired in 2014. But this would cover the utilities that were put in under that permit. So typically, the township receives in the neighborhood of $23,000 a year in Metro Act permit fees from the Michigan Public Service Commission. Those funds are used for right-of-way maintenance activities. U.S. Signal did include the required $500 application fee. So I included a copy of the permit application as well as the bilateral form. So since the passage of the Metro Act provided the uniformity to the right-of-way permit applications, there's very little opportunity for the township to request modifications to the permit. We'll note that the state records indicate no issues with the U.S. Signal Company as Metro Act permit entity. We've also communicated with the Kent County Road Commission, who's actually responsible for permitting the work in the right-of-way. So again, they have to apply to us for a Metro Act permit, but then they have to apply to the Kent County Road Commission for a work permit. And they'll be responsible for permitting any work allowed by the Metro Act. They've indicated that they've worked well with U.S. Signal Company and have no past issues. There's no expenditures related to the approval of the request from the U.S. Signal Company. Granting the request ensures the township continues to receive Metro Act monies from the state related to the U.S. Signal Company. With that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
The Kent County Road Commission has always done well at monitoring and policing all the utilities, regardless of its U.S. Signal, AT&amp;T, or whoever. That plus, we really have no cause to deny them this. So for that, that's my two cents worth.
Well, then I move to approve the Metro Act right away, bilateral permit request, makes sense from U.S. Signal, and authorize the township manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the township.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the Unilateral Metro Act Permit as Written for U.S. Signal. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Last item of new business, 0912022, Consider Bit Awards for the FEMA Grant Project, and we've got Chief Majors here. Thank you. Here's some of the good news or answer questions. Manager Swayze?
Nope, it's the chief show tonight.
Fun to give him an out.
Thanks, man. All right. Yeah, so as you know, we went through grant process last year, and we were able to get, to get successful with that, with that grant. It's for a health and wellness grant. That's going to be NFPA 1582 and 1583 compliant. Health and wellness grants are typically difficult to get. It's a hard grant to write. It's a really hard program to get off and running because it takes a lot of infrastructure, it takes policies, it takes a supportive board, it takes money. It takes a lot of organization. We're fortunate to have all of that in place. And so with this grant totaling out at $117,115, we're at the point now where it's time to secure vendors and get this, get this grant in place. And so we're here tonight to basically put those vendors forward and for approval, so we can get started on some contracts going forward. Here to answer any questions, I've got Ken Follett here with Center for Physical Rehab. He's going to be the athletic trainer that's going to work with our firefighters and basically injury-proof them and injury rehab them if the case may be. So he can certainly answer questions on that, as he's got a whole lot of expertise that I don't. But if you, if you look, the grant itself covered $48,928 for physical exams, like your doctor's exam. Athletic trainers up to $17,160, and then exercise equipment for both stations totaling $56,882. So we've got some really nice commercial-grade equipment for both stations that are going to help kind of give us a place to stay fit. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have, but Ken's probably a lot more interesting to talk to, so I'll turn it over to him.
Hi, Chief. I see that you've changed providers for your physical exams.
Correct.
And I'm not going to influence you one way or another, but I think that was a good call on your part to do so, because I've been a recipient of some of those older exams.
Correct.
Okay. Let me make one thing perfectly clear. If there's other things that firefighters need logically to stay in shape, to maintain health, et cetera, do not hesitate to come back before us and say, that 17 grand didn't quite cover it. We need another 500 bucks or whatever.
Understood.
You understand that.
Thank you.
That's all.
Looks like it's down to 15.6 anyway.
Basically, the 15.6 is quoted at four hours a week and $75 an hour. Now, that can fluctuate based on our roster numbers. We typically add three or four firefighters a year. Sometimes they get hired elsewhere, they retire. So some of those numbers have a little bit of flexibility on, based on our roster numbers. Also too, if we have a lot of injuries and we need Ken to come in for a little bit more hours here and there, or if Building and Grounds has an injury, maybe that they need to be looked at, we can have some flexibility to kind of go up a little bit from there. So it's like a baseline.
Great.
Chief, are you going to be able to move some of the new equipment into your temporary facility? Are you going to put it all out of Station 2?
Yes and no. So we need Station 2's training room right now, because we don't have a training room until Station 1 gets built. So we're going to phase this in over three quarters. So it's going to basically, Village Bike and Fitness, Corey, he's going to, he's going to have it professionally installed, and we're gearing that up towards August, September.
So none of this new equipment will go out to the temporary site at the airport?
Some of it will. It'll be stored there, and then if it makes sense to have it kind of set up there, some of this is pretty large equipment. So to be able to set that up with the, with the confined space that we have at the temporary facility might not make sense. But some of like the treadmill, for example, might be able to be used, or the step mill, or maybe some of the downbells or free weights. We'd be able to utilize in the next eight months until we can get Station 1 moved into, and then we can free up the training room at Station 2 to convert that into a gym.
Is this a one-time grant, or is this something that comes up periodically?
So part of this grant is a one-time grant to get, to basically get us started. And then we're going to analyze the, all the data over the next year, and when we're confident that we're going to see some significant savings. We do have a lot of injuries, and I think that with Ken on board, we're going to be able to mitigate some of that and provide probably some data to look at next year, and you guys can make a decision whether we continue some of this. For the physical health exams, this is something we do anyway. This new company we use has a complete cancer screening. It's every single possible test you could come up with. If it's something that we want to continue to do, we have a baseline now that we can do a 36-month, I guess, repeating. So maybe we could divide that by three and still stay within our budget. But we'll be able to kind of maintain that infrastructure. The gym equipment itself is, as long as we maintain it for our policies, that stuff is going to stay with the stations as long as, as I'm chief. It'll be the next, you know, 15, 20 years at least. And then the athletic trainers, I think the proof will be in the pudding. I think that Ken and his team got a really good program, and that's something that we'll have to look at next year to see if that's supportive or not.
Yeah, I was just going to say, just to follow up, that the ROI for athletic trainers in industrial or in public safety is, like Chief said, proves in the pudding. For example, one of the founding, one of the first programs of this nature was in San Antonio, Texas, with the Fire Department down there. I can send you articles if you'd like. The athletic trainer, the initial outlay for the project was recovered in the first quarter of the year. And then they saved almost half a million dollars, a little over half a million dollars in the next nine months.
In medical bills?
Yes.
It's awesome.
So in cost prevention, in medical bills, in the nature of athletic trainers, injury prevention, recognition, rehabilitation. We're one of the leading professionals, healthcare professionals in that field. So we can take that, a lot of the injuries that our firefighters see is right up our alley. When you talk about orthopedic injuries, sport-related, movement-related injuries, we see that all the time. So the things that we could help mitigate quickly, and whether, and make a decision on, hey, do they need to go see a doctor right now, today? And we can get them in as quickly as possible to help determine work-relatedness. If it is work-related, do they need PT, or do they need to come work with me for the day, or a peer fitness trainer and kind of go from there? So we can save a good amount of work comp costs to the township by going that route.
I want to thank the Fire Department for being proactive to go, going out, finding the grant, putting all the work in and the time to try to get it, and saving us as the township a ton of money. So this, don't thank us, we got to thank you.
I wish I could take credit for that. I've got a couple of good captains that wrote, put a lot of polish on that grant. Our Health and Safety Officer, Captain Knowles, and then Captain Stevenson did most of the heavy lifting on that. But it's been a few years in the making and then got a good roster to kind of get it going. So we're excited for it. The three we're recommending would be Professional Health Services for the physical exams, Center for Physical Rehabilitation for Athletic Trainers, and then Village Bike and Fitness, which is just up the road in Plainfield.
Is there an end date that you have to utilize this funding?
Great, yes. We had two years from, from the grant delivery, so we're on, we're on target to be ahead of the game and stay currently compliant.
Very cool.
So I have a comment. So I, just for the board to know, I actually asked Ken to come through my daughter. You should know that my daughter is employed by the Center for Physical Rehab as an athletic trainer, but at Byern Center High School. And she was actually driving by the Fire Department one day and said, they need an athletic trainer. And as it unfolded, so I just want everyone to know that. But as it unfolded, it turns out Chief had been working with Ken for some time, and it was, they didn't even connect the dots. So it was completely unbeknownst that there was a connection, but I do want to make everyone aware of that. So I've learned the value of athletic trainers and prevention, having very good access to one. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you so much, and thank you, Chief.
I appreciate it.
I like how self-sufficient the Fire Department is.
Appreciate that.
Well, I move to approve the vendors as, for the grant, as Chief has recommended to us.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the Bit Awards for the FEMA Grant Project as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you so much, both of you, for coming and for all your hard work. We have no items on the discussion portion of tonight's meeting, so this brings us to the second public comment section. And if people, well, not anyone, but Cub Scouts, if people want to ask questions of trustees, not in public, but just after, we're happy to do that, too. In public is welcome. I just was trying to.
So as you mentioned, we're PACS 3634, so we are working towards our Arrow of Light. One of the areas of that Arrow of Light badge is to get to know our public, our government and what they do. And so we just want to have a chance to like ask some questions. This is my son, Alex. So Alex and I like to build things together. So I know you had a question about.
What kind of projects do you do?
Building projects that you may be involved with, or any of those lines.
Yes, at the township?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great question. Ben, you want to?
Sure, we build all sorts of stuff. So the biggest project we're working on is we're building a new fire station right now, so really excited about that. You may have seen the construction site across the, the way there, and Chief and his team have done a great job of shepherding that project through. And hopefully you guys will join us for a, they don't do a ribbon cutting, they do a hose uncoupling, and that'll happen in September. So, you know, we have building support to support our programs and our staff. We do a lot with infrastructure. So, you know, we build pathways, we work with the Road Commission to build roads, we work with the city of Grand Rapids to build water and sewer lines. We've built parks, you know, we build all sorts of things so we can provide services to our residents.
Interesting.
Thank you.
He's a Sheldon.
My name is Tristan.
A little bit louder.
My name is Tristan.
Okay.
It's scary, but it's not scary.
So your name is Tristan?
My name is Tristan.
And what did you want to ask?
And what do you like the most about Cascade?
What do you like the most about Cascade? Okay.
That's an easy fun question.
I've lived here since 1968. I wouldn't think of moving anywhere else until I get too old to live on my own. And some of the things I like about Cascade is a river. It's a nice, clean river that everybody can enjoy, and we have public parks on the river that people can enjoy. And most of all, I like the trees and the colors of all the trees. Why go up north when you've got it all around you right here?
We just raked all ours up.
What else do people like about Cascade?
I like that it's really out from the city a little bit.
You know what else is really great, too? You guys stay in school. The school system out here is better than anywhere else. I graduated in 1969. I can testify to that.
I like how it's safe, pretty safe compared to a lot of places, and also it's hilly, and we've got a lot of trees. We could do more for parks, we could do more for other things, but I think if we focus on the great stuff, like how close we are to fun stuff in the city, but we don't have to live in Grand Rapids, we just get to enjoy things that are in the big city. But then here in Cascade, we kind of are away from it to enjoy more nature and that kind of thing. So I hope we can really focus on that and preserve all that in Cascade. That's why I ran for supervisor, because I kind of got tired of seeing all the quick developments popping up and not, I didn't think we were doing enough to preserve what makes Cascade a really fun place to live. And then I learned more, and I was really happy I ran. Anybody else?
We've got a great library just building here tonight. That's probably one of the best in the county.
And you know why? Because the residents of Cascade wanted it, and that's what we're here for. We're to make it good for the residents of Cascade.
It's a good question. It's kind of fun.
Say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We could go on all night long.
Ask us some more of those self-centered little questions. Anyone want to ask the more typical angry questions or comments?
My name is Noah. And I was wondering if there's anything about your job that frustrates you?
And I was wondering if there's anything about your job that frustrates you.
Oh boy. That was a bad question.
Next, I swear you are not a plant.
I'll start with that. In jobs that I had before, if the boss said do something, you got it done right away. But in Cascade and wherever you go, we have what we call transparency. You gotta get the input of the people and you have to make sure everybody understands what you're doing and why. And that takes time. So for instance, we may come up with an idea tonight, but we have to have maybe a public hearing on it. We got to put it in the newspaper. We got to hear from people. Sometimes it's months before you actually get to do it. So that's frustrating for me.
Anybody else? One of the things that I think is frustrating is, um, so we, our job is to handle your parents and all the residents living in Cascades their taxes, right? And to manage it. And if you were doing that at a business, then if you weren't doing a good job, the money would just stop coming in and it would be really obvious. But there's good things about it, but here in Cascade, we collect it not because of necessarily how great we're doing at the time, but because of where we live. And we're just fortunate, we live in a wonderful area that's naturally beautiful and close to really cool stuff. So we bring in, and this is good because uh, where we live is, is a valuable place to live. Other people want to live here. And it gives us a lot of money, but the money keeps coming in, right? And it's not necessarily because of what, I mean, we have lots of great people working really hard, but it's not necessarily because of our efforts. So then if you've got a lot of money that keeps coming in, well, then sometimes people get kind of comfortable or yeah, just, you know, there's not a lot of incentive. So then you come in as the new leader and it's never like in business, you just boom, 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 get it done. But at the township level, it's like a theater. I can't lose it and start yelling it back. I shouldn't lose it and start yelling at people. But you're kind of able to hide out if you have a lot of money. Do you know what I'm saying? You can, and so there's a, the inefficiency that they say in government, I find frustrating, but I'm learning to be patient. But you can't just come out and complain. You have to, you know, lead and I think that's been hard. It's also a good. On that note, anyone else have frustrations they want to express? There's a lot of gamesmanship behind the scenes that people don't know about that wouldn't fly in, in private business because the money would stop coming in and more money, more problems, I guess. So you could either go in government or you could choose private business and there's pros and cons to both.
Brian Holcomb, thirty-four, fifteen, Gunstone Court. Good evening, trustees and board members. I'd like to get an update on Egypt Creek, if there is anything. And I also have one of the neighbors couldn't make it here due to medical reasons and I'd like to read you something before you give me an update. He told me he's going to send you guys an email. He said I could read parts of this, so I will. Basically, he's telling me the piles are back, the truck bed and parts are back, the trash is back. They had a, a large RV camper there this summer, complete with a waste holding tank that's gone now. Doesn't anybody from Cascade simply drop into spot check this property? Last week, Monday, Tuesday, truck after truck after truck with a trailer was dumping. I know he can do stuff on his property, but he's not supposed to be bringing in from outside. It was before seven o'clock. Maybe not a whole lot before seven o'clock, like six forty-five, but he's doing this under darkness with daylight savings time and he's got trailer after trailer. On the west side, he's almost completely shut down the creek, uh, according to Bob Kramer. Uh, he's got video, uh, he's caused all sorts of noise tonight for over an hour and a half. He had a pickup truck, bright lights on, just sitting, don't know why. It might be one of their plow trucks, but it was sitting shining their lights into our house. Now, an hour and a half, I think is excessive. I did call the sheriff department, got the voicemail, so I registered that. Four to six months ago, we met with Madison. She was supposed to be putting a complaint vehicle in place so we could register these and compile them and have numbers. Where is that?
I haven't heard anything on Egypt Creek in over a month last was Senator, or sorry, Representative Albert's office was getting in touch with Eagle, but have you heard it? What's the status manager, Swayze?
So we did. I did reach back out to Hannah at Representative Albert's office. She was the one that we were working with. So she had been told that Eagle was going to send their um, fact finding letter by the end of the month, which was October. So October is past, so I asked Hannah if uh, they did get anything from Eagle. Uh, I haven't heard back from her yet. Senator Albert did get, Representative Albert did get reelected as a senator. He won't be in our district anymore, but hopefully he'll keep his foot on the gas here. And also it sounds like that uh, when he brings, is going to be speaker. So um, hopefully she'll have a little bit more uh, clout as well. But I have not gotten any feedback from Albert's office or Eagle on it.
Are they allowed to bring outside materials to their property?
So they can bring outside materials as long as it's work that they are doing.
So other people's leaves?
Yes.
Uh, you can see them from.
You can see bags and why can I not dump on my property as a resident and why can they do it?
So here's the question, I think, are we at the point now? Because it's a state law and generally the state enforces the laws. The township or, let's reach back out to legal counsel. He already wrote a memo on it, but to see if, I mean, if they real, if the violations are as blatant as bad as the residents around it are saying, which we can look into that.
Things about the lights and the noise and all that, those are things that we can handle. Those need to be reported to Madison or the Sheriff's Department.
Right. So that is a, and, and it sounds like they're trying. So that's a, that's a nuisance ordinance violation. But as far as the wetland preservation and violations, I think we're at the point where one, we got to determine which we can do, you know, how bad the violations are. And then if they are that bad, I mean, we got to be able to, we can't just be walked over at the township level. So maybe it's time to consider through legal counsel if we want to take up the um, question of the township pursuing something to enforce the state laws. Does that make sense?
I can circle back around with my comment.
Yeah. So I think first we got to find out, we need verification that that you're a man of your word with the, the accuracy of the violation.
Pictures, I've gotten license plate numbers. I've called the sheriff's department. I've turned it over to them.
If you have already.
How about putting a camera up and uh, you know, a trail cam or something, videotaping. You don't want to go out there and sit on it as like, like somebody should be doing.
No, no, we've got people to go out there and sit or look. It's easy. So let's do that, right? Township can investigate that and then we can take it to legal and we can see, do we now reach the point where we're going to start enforcing state laws so that people know you got to follow along Cascade? And I don't know the state laws enough, so, but I think that's.
Well, we should have ordinances in place that you can't do A, B, and C. Okay. D, E, and F, which is the wetlands and all that, that can be covered by good old state when they finally get around to doing it.
Wait, so do then you're talking about the nuisance ordinance, does that, the A, B, and C?
There's a lot of things he's doing that doesn't follow the wetlands. Okay, that's a sub, that's uh, that's the major thing that he's doing, but he's also doing a bunch of nuisance stuff, which as a resident, he's also depreciating property. Bob Kramer wants to split off his property. His realtor told him good luck getting rid of that portion because it faces right up there and he clear cut a bunch of trees and it looks ugly and all the noise. He, they do, it sounds like a uh, like they're doing a lot of work on the weekends, whether or not that's, the doors are open, they've got air impact wrenches going. They're not a good neighbor. You know, a lot of this stuff we sweep under the, the rug. They're not a good neighbor and they're violating law after law and they're thumbing their nose and doing whatever they want. So as a township, we need to put things in place. Like we tried to with Madison. She was supposed to be coming up with something. Don't know why we don't have anything, but all these nuisances that we need to register them, he needs not to be there in a residential area. This should not have gone through back when it went through. And somebody's dragging their feet, getting things done. Now, I realize that with the government, things are slow and they're not coming out for the wetlands. And the floodplain issue, that will get addressed, but he's doing a lot of other things that he should not be doing, which I believe should say Cascade Township. So we need to have those rules and regulations in place so we can do something to him. Start finding and ticketing him daily if need be, until he stops doing what he's doing.
So let's look at the potential violations at the nuisance ordinance, just to start with, make sure that we're on top of that. If you don't think he's in violation, then let's get back to him. We don't think he is.
He's allowed to do all this, which I can't believe he is. I mean, we've been six months now and we haven't gotten a whole lot further than, I've been at it for over a year, but we approached you back in February and not a whole lot has been done since February. Yeah, we've called, made some calls, but as far as actual doing something, we keep getting lip service from the state. Well, what if we keep getting lip service from the state? Then it's up to us as a township to do certain things. So this can't happen. This shouldn't ever happen in the first place.
Let's get some decisive answers at our, um, from our end as far as if we don't think he's violating the, and I don't have an opinion either. I based on what.
The lawyer was supposed to come up with what we could do and we, uh, we haven't seen anything about that.
No, he did as far as the wetland issue, which is us, the, the state is in charge, the government entity, right? That's what he did. Nuisance stuff, sound, noise, being a rude neighbor. I don't think that went to legal. That's just, we need to get back, look into it and figure out if he's, if his behavior crosses the line where we get involved or is just stinks, you knew, live by him. And I'm not saying either way, but let's get an answer back to the residents because I'm kind of, I'd like having you guys here, but I'm kind of sick of not being able to answer your questions.
Yeah.
And I don't know, Ben, I don't know, but let's get it figured out.
He had to clear cut it all down, which he wasn't supposed to do. It'd be one thing. Well, he's just being a bad neighbor. He's doing whatever he wants and a lot of it is against state law. But until we can get the state out here, I, I realize that that portion of it, we have to wait for them. But the other parts, we don't.
Yep, I get that. And the state part is really frustrating on our end.
Yeah, I understand.
But.
That's the big one.
But we at least can determine if his level of, if his behavior rises to the level of government at the township level involvement. So I would like, you guys need an answer, yes or no, either way, and an explanation why.
But it needs to go further, not just, I made a call.
Right. If you can ticket him, ticket him. You know what I mean? I just, I don't know. Let's get, let's get.
I'm not seeing a whole lot in place right now for us to go after. That's what we need.
Yeah.
I mean, how many complaints is it, is it going to take? Well, how many complaints do you, we have? Well, we don't have anything set up right now to register their complaints, which was supposed to happen months ago.
Wait, do we?
That's, that's number one.
So we've given the direction to make the complaints to Madison.
But does she have anything? So we could file complaint number one, file complaint number two. I mean, we can, we can come up with probably twenty in a period of a couple of months that are valid. They, if they have to be registered through the sheriff's department showing up, then we'll just start calling the sheriff every time and have him go down and make sure that that is correct. I mean, he's violating on a daily basis.
But you don't want to have to do that. That's something that you can ticket somebody on if they are actually violating.
If they get three tickets, then hey, then we take the next step. Okay. You, you can't do this type of an operation if you're not going to buy by these parameters. And maybe that's what we need to do. Maybe we need to come up with more parameters. Now, I, as a resident, can't dump other people's stuff on my property. Why can he?
He's running a landscaping business.
He's running a landscaping business, but it doesn't say he's running a dumping business. And when was that ever part of? Was that in the original back in twenty thirteen? Because if it wasn't, you lived there, you wouldn't have approved it.
Let's go, so there's a, there's a lot of different issues, right? The fact that he was allowed to operate and then expand his, use his property in a way that you're not supposed to use property in that area. I get it, the township allowed that, but there's different issues, right? I want a memo broken down in plain English that addresses each one.
Take a look at the PUD and it says that he cannot depreciate the residence property. Well, he's Kramer's property's gone down, our property's gone down, he's violating the PUD.
Does that have it in there, Ben?
I'm not aware of that being in there.
Take a look at it.
All right. So look at it from the land use perspective. I mean, the ordinances have to be pretty simple. It's just nuisance ordinances, right?
And he only started doing this in the last year, year and a half. Up until then, it was fine. He was only using it. He was leaving, coming back, leaving, coming back. Year and a half ago, he started clear cutting the wetlands and the floodplain because he thought he could bulldoze it all and fill it in with uh, cement and or blacktop.
All right. So by the next meet, let's go through, let, take the PUD, flush that out if there's issues that can be done or whatever. Look at the nuisance ordinance issues, if they're legit, what they are, if they're legit, what we've got, flush that out. And then the higher, more complicated wetland destruction, we already have the legal memo on and we can hold off on whether or not we want to pursue that at this time. But yeah, go ahead.
Would it be an easier process? These guys know what, 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 what their issues are. And it's, it's tough.
It's a township isn't giving those.
Yeah, I, I, we need a process. And my, my point is,
Process.
Well, I think a better process. And, and I was thinking like you guys, if you could sit for a half an hour with Madison and let Madison document them all. Now we got issue number one, number two, number three.
We did.
Because right now, which is good, that's good. Because right now, what you're saying is, and I hear you. I got words, they're going into air and nothing's happening. So if we, maybe if we get one through fifteen documented or you hand those to Madison, then can't we get with Deputy Diappa and say which of these are enforceable by ticketing?
It's not that complicated. Ben, you're the manager, you got this. The land use issues and, and basic township ordinances are not sheriffs, are not county level ordinances. That's basic township stuff that we're allowed to issue a ticket for.
Oh, we can issue the ticket.
Yes, it doesn't, we don't need to waste our, because we got other issues that we need the sheriff's department for. This is simple township stuff. Are you being a good neighbor? Under our laws, are you using your land in the right way? So Ben, you're going to handle it with Madison. And if you have to give answers that they don't want to hear, you still got to give the answers. I just don't know. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we need to do something. We, it's been stalled for.
Yeah, I get a knot in my stomach every time I walk up to the post. Get it done. And if we got to deliver some bad news, let's at least deliver the bad news. I don't know. I don't know because it's.
Oh, there's something we can do. It's just, we need to do it.
Yeah. Sorry about.
And we need a vehicle in place in writing so we can register things. So it's not just a neighbor coming in complaining about somebody. I mean, hey, if it gets checked out, I know that when the sheriff goes in there, they found it before. So I'm not just breathing because I don't like the guy.
No, and it's all in writing and emails. This is not.
Right. And the big thing is the floodplain and the uh, wetlands, that will come. But in the meantime, he's still doing other stuff he shouldn't be doing. Like tonight, having these bright LED lights on for over an hour and a half shining at our house for no reason. Now, if I owned a truck, pickup truck with bright lights on the back, I'm not going to let it run for an hour and a half, shining lights on an area for no reason unless I'm doing something I'm not supposed to be doing.
Has the township communicated with that property owner?
Yes.
When's the last time?
Uh, when the uh, attorney sent the letter back in sometime this summer.
Oh, early summer. So it's November now. Have we gotten additional complaints since then?
I have not gotten an additional complaint now.
How would you, we registered if you had?
You talked to Madison.
And I think it should be registered with a number or something. Complaint number X, Y, Z, A, B, C, one, two, three. So when we go to look at it again, if there's multiple complaints of that area, then you know that he's violating A, B, C, F, whatever. And then we can take steps that if he keeps doing it, then you will take this action, this action or this action. And so far, that's what we need. We need something in place. So it's just not hearsay, which it's not, but how do you know? So let, put a vehicle in place so we can prove it.
Oh, this is easy. We just need man, we, and I don't want an employee thrown under the bus either. So let's flush it out and get back answers on township issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Joey Ginsen, three, four, two, zero, Glenstone. Tell you, listening to this conversation pisses me off. We met as a group with Ben for a couple hours. After that, we met with Madison for a couple of hours. At one of these meetings, we were told we should contact Deputy Aleppo. I've called him several times. So to say there's been no complaints, I've called him three or four times in the last few weeks. And whether that gets sent to the next level, that's not our responsibility. He told us to call Sheriff Aleppo. I called him. And he told me, there's really nothing we can do.
Why are we telling him to contact the sheriff on?
For the nuisance complaints, so they can be our ticket given, or whatever the issue is.
They respond to after hour nuisance complaints. So if they gave, we get like night, night and noise complaints, the sheriff's department responds to those.
Okay, but then if they're found to be, if it's a, the way to the township, I mean, don't we issue tickets? You got to get them to stop, right? You gotta get them to stop, right? What's our?
You gotta get the sheriff to answer the phone first. So when you're calling after hours, most of the time he doesn't pick up the telephone. Cause he's a normal person that wants to go to sleep like everybody else, like I would like to do in my home.
Do we have the authority as a township based on ordinances to issue tickets to residents on those violations?
Yes, but we have to, we basically have to, somebody has to be there to hear the noise violation, right?
You have to see it in person?
We can't issue tickets on hearsay. So that's why the sheriff's department responds to it because they have patrol that are on staff twenty-four seven.
What if you've got a recording of it? Like a resident, you know what I mean? A resident has a video recording of it.
Yeah, I'd have to talk to legal counsel about that.
All right, let's talk to him. I don't know.
So like Brian said, these are all issues we've been talking about for over six months. And each time we've come, we're told that, you know, we're gonna look into it and, you know, drop the hammer, things are gonna happen. And unfortunately, nothing's happened. So whatever steps need to be taken for whatever process. And if you keep changing the goalposts about who the hell we're supposed to contact, you should at least let us know that we changed who we're supposed to contact. You told us to contact the sheriff. Now today you're telling us to contact the other person. If it changes next week, you should at least let us know that.
Hi there, Scott Pinzalkman, twenty-five seventy orange. A few things. First off, I saw that they, uh, fixed the split rail fence along near the, um, Camelback Bridge. So if you saw that out on your jogs, I saw it on my bike ride in the last seventy degree day. Um, my other issue is the deer herd. I'm, uh, filling in for Jeff Hughes. He's out. Um, sorry for the photos I sent you, but.
Of the deer feces?
Yes, uh, just so you could see, uh, I cleaned up my yards front and back on Sunday uh, last week and then filled up my little shovel thing that I use again to scoop up dog feces in three days. Like there's a huge problem with the deer. My neighbor, he just left. He had to go get his son. He was gonna speak to it as well. I mean, anywhere, I constantly walk out my door and there's usually two or three deer just in the, in the, either my yard, the neighbor's yard. I came back from a bike ride. There were six deer bedding down in my grass in the afternoon. Uh, it's a constant issue. Um, like I said, I've been in contact with Jeff. He said that I guess there will be a deer study in December at Burton Park. And he said that you guys were in touch with a doctor at Cornerstone?
So it's actually going on now. So they're taking the trail cam photos now. And then, uh, once, um, uh, December is finished, they'll basically analyze it. They take, uh, pre-rut, rut and post-rut two week period. Uh, and they use that to determine the, kind of the populations in the park. And that's the first step for any type of deer management program that we'd want to utilize.
Okay. Is there something that, will the DNR or could they possibly even move the deer? You know, try and go and pick them up, move them someplace else, bring them to Calcasco, Manasolona or Ionia County or something like Ionia County State Game Area.
Expensive. Who pays for it?
Well, it's the state's deers. I mean, I looked online. They said they average about fifty thousand car deer crashes a year. Also, I don't know if you guys see this, they were just talking about it on the radio where a deer crashed into someone's home and destroys, you know, inside the house. Cause you know, deer don't usually belong inside of residence. So they kind of freak out. You know, I don't want to see that happen at my house. I don't want to see obviously lots of people hitting deer. I mean, you know, you can probably drive around quite a bit and see, you know, deer on the side of the road that kind, you know, schmuck by cars. But I mean, it's just gonna continue to keep getting worse and worse and worse. And if we can do something about it, that'd be great. You know, either taking out, you know, I think taking out the bucks, taking out the does and just see how it goes. But it needs, something needs to happen. Unfortunately, you know, I can't cite for animal waste in my house, you know, which I'd love to, but I'm concerned about for my dog. You know, eating the feces, the disease of what these can, uh, carry, you know, deer ticks and stuff like that with Lyme disease. So it's just not a good thing. And obviously I know we're in their area, I guess, but you know, they just keep populating and populating and they will continue to, um, you know, reproduce. So that's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Online at all?
If any of our Zoom participants would like to speak during this, um, public comment, please raise your hand.
Article twelve, manager comments?
I have anything, thank you.
Board member comments? Trustee Shipley?
For a scout that haven't been here before, I always do this. My dad taught me to stand when my boss comes in the room. I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight. Um, bring your neighbor next time. Um, we react, uh, to the more complaints and I'm sorry about, about the bad neighbor down there in Egypt Creek, but, uh, thanks for coming here tonight and staying through this. And everybody up there in Zoom land.
I have a question on, um, the success of the Peace Park deer hunt. Has anybody registered a successful tag fill?
So we send out the form at the end of the first period. So the first period ends the twenty-first and then we'll send that out for them to fill out. So we don't have any feedback yet.
Okay. And then, um, kind of going along with the Eagle Creek thing, the, um, the house down on Cascade Road that we've been working on for over two years.
So, yeah, I talked to Madison. So the, the person that's in the house is actually a tenant. They're not the owner. And the owner is in the process of evicting them. Um, so they were in the thirty day notice period. The last time I talked to Madison, that was about a week ago. So, uh, the owner of the house is evicting the, the people that are down there right now.
Okay.
Would we ticket, not that we are, but in that situation, do you ticket at the township level, the, the tenant who's renting the property or the owner of the property?
Uh, we would more than likely ticket the owner of the property, um, because we like to have the power of putting it on the taxes if they don't pay it. Um, so we try to ticket the owners whenever possible. Uh, but we would consult with legal counsel before we did that.
Any other board comments? I have one, um, about the, well, I really appreciate how our community policing officer Deputy Diappa, who's not here tonight, but his soon to be boss was earlier, has taken the initiative to address the serious safety issues near Twenty-Eighth Street and the ninety-six overpass. Uh, Deputy Diappa has been instrumental in addressing the disproportionate amount of crime at several of the hotels in that area, as well as the different homeless encampments that have popped up under the overpass and around them. Um, Mantra Swayze and I met with him at the end of September, September twenty-ninth, so a month and a half ago. And he presented us with an ordinance that he went out on his own and found that another community uses as a tool to be able to directly, um, ticket and remove encampments on public property. At this point, without that ordinance as a tool, we have to pressure and bother and work with MDOT to do it for us. So Deputy Diappa was great in bringing that to us. Um, and I spoke with the legal counsel like he called today about second half of that problem, um, recouping some of the costs that we're just hemorrhaging as far as first responding to the hotel crimes. Um, but I spoke with him today about that. And then I also, he, he mentioned that he hasn't received that ordinance to review yet. So Ben, can you get that to him? Cause as soon as the board gets that, we can pass it and move quickly. That's all I have. Is there a motion or further discussion?
Simply makes a motion for adjournment since the business of this meeting has been completed.
Support.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.